Technology and it in its present form, it's a desktop software. So we thought, you know, Southern Oregon's never high up on the radar screen of 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 the state of Oregon in general. And if we happen to get that Cascadia Seduction Zone going off sooner than later, at least if we had some some of this software sort of interspersed among our more critical entities, we might have a chance to have a little bit more easier rehabilitation of the region once Cascadia happened than not. And then also, the idea was if we get sort of a presence in the state for being early adopters of this earthquake early warning technology, then in the future, maybe they'll pay us a little more attention as the technology improves, we'll be one of the first ones to get it. The public release of this software, probably in the shape of a cell phone app, will happen will happen in 2023. But since 2019, that's a long way away. So we now have more than two dozen entities participating. They all have the software and we're trying to figure out how we fit this into our emergency plans right now. And I've I've requested that our participating entities try to insert this early warning software into their emergency plans. And we're calling them for Jackson County, we're calling it the 45 Second Plans. So that's about the time we have between the alert going off and Cascadia hitting us. And we're looking at three or five minutes of Cascadia. So that 45 seconds could be critical in saving lives and preserving infrastructure. So anyway, that's.
Mike, that whole theory is that the epicenter is going to be, you know, possibly hopefully somewhere else other than Southern Oregon. And then we'll hear when the when the earthquake hits through the alarm system and before it comes to here and starts shaking, we'll have 45 seconds to react.
Right.
And we have public worst and turn off valves, you can exit a building if you want to or.
Surgeons can get there.
That 45 seconds.
Scalpels out of their patients. They can turn the MRIs off. The Medford Water Commission can turn their pumps off, which are all custom huge pumps. Who knows when they could get them down here if they get destroyed during earthquake, you know, if they're moving and the earthquake hits, it's not good. So, yeah, so there's there's Shake Alert. And sort of as an ancillary benefit to becoming involved in Shake Alert, we got some early notice of a companion project, also out of the University of Oregon called Alert Wildfire. What this is, is a state of the art, state of the art cameras. They pan tilt zoom. They have near infrared capability and they're remote operable. So you could have a number of authorized individuals having access to these cameras. What they're meant to do is to complement the existing ODF system, which is extensive, but it's not, it does not cover all of Southern Oregon and they're not very prevalent near our cities. And the idea is to catch any kinds of wildfires when they start as soon as ignition occurs and also assist in the suppression efforts once that wildfire is being is being dealt with. The governor's proposed budget right now has enough money for 85 cameras statewide. So last month, we brought in, well, at least we had an electronic presentation by one of the two individuals at the U of O to talk about the system. And from that, we're going to have a meeting on May 10th at 10 o'clock. I'll send out the email tomorrow, probably inviting everyone, but we'll have the two principals from the U of O come down to give the presentation in person and also to have a just to be part of a discussion, a regional discussion about how we get moving on this, to be able to get as many of these cameras down here as we can, because we're at the top of the list in terms of wildfire vulnerability in the state right now. And there's no reason why we shouldn't get as many of these cameras as we possibly can. So if we show that we're coordinated and we collaborate well, if we we certainly know we have the need, but if the interest is there and the infrastructure for these cameras is available, then hopefully we'll get some additional tools to try to take our summers back. It's long past due. So we will be inviting fire chiefs, emergency personnel, public managers and and ODF and others who are interested to come down and be part of that that activity. This year, we're making our GIS specialist available in a more proactive way than you have than we have had before to do some pre-census work. And that's specifically census blocks. If you're if you're into the census, you know that, well, the building blocks of the census are the census blocks. And if your census blocks are as representative and accurate as they possibly can be, well, then guess what? Your census results are going to be as accurate and positive and as accurate and as representative as they can be. And that means that in the future, when you are going for money for a lot of things, transportation, infrastructure, a lot of those decisions are based on census. So if you have an accurate census, you're going to get the most funding that you possibly can based on your demographics. That's a really good thing and it all starts with the census blocks. So if you are interested in getting some assistance, our GIS person is available. We started drone program a little bit, a little while ago. Initial idea was to provide our jurisdictions with aerial video or photographs, whatever they thought would be useful to them. And we've since added some software that can get can estimate the solar potential of a building before there are any solar panels on it, just from the data we get from a from a from drone footage. We can also digitally at least remove obstacles like a tree to see what impact that has on the estimated solar potential. And for those jurisdictions like Ashland that have a solar ordinance, before a structure is erected, we can actually add a structure to the software to see if what kind of impact that will have on a neighboring solar array. So take care of any problems before they actually occur. In addition, in a couple of weeks, we'll be getting a new drone. It's a two camera drone and that's going to have infrared, an infrared camera mounted to it. So we can, we'll make ourselves available to public safety because that can detect somebody who's lost in the woods. It can also detect illegal campfires and it can detect heat leakage from buildings. So we're especially interested in the the illegal fire angle. We intend on doing just a couple of gratis flights over the Greenway to see if we can detect where those illegal campfires are. And at least one jurisdiction has communicated with us, potentially interested us doing some drone flights over their watershed, just to check to see how prevalent illegal campfires are, just so they know. So we think it'll be useful to our members. And in in the future, we're also looking potentially at using a type of lens, a multi-spectral or even a hyperspectral lens, a scanner, they call it, to identify invasive species and also could potentially use it to to gauge agricultural crop health. Everything has a spectral signature and as long as you know that spectral signature, you can tell, not only you can identify the plants, but also you can tell if something's wrong with that spectral signature. So that's something that's interesting, but we're not there yet. It's a little technical. Our GIS person is like, I don't know about this, but we'll see. Our senior and disability staff, we reported to our board on this about six months ago. We've been plagued in this region, actually across the state, in terms of vacancies in our adult foster homes. They're not coordinated. These are all private enterprise. This is all private enterprise. A lot of these are in homes where just two or three people, others are businesses and they have 30 or 40 residents, but there's been no central place where you could access the data, not only the characteristics of these adult foster facilities, adult foster homes, but also whether there are vacancies. So in the past, members of the public, case managers, they had to call every single one of these adult foster homes to find out if there was a vacancy. It's it was ridiculous. So working with the Medicaid staff in the region, we developed a website, adultfostercare.com, where now you can go online and out of the 130 adult foster homes in the region, 108 have now signed up for the website. So now, as soon as they have a vacancy, that goes on the website and people can see it. They can also see some of the some of the amenities that these adult foster homes offer and the rules. You know, do they allow pets? Can you take medical marijuana when you're a resident there? Things like that. So it's 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 an incredible savor of time and frustration and everybody's benefiting. The adult foster homes love it because their vacancy is up and pretty quickly it's it's taken care of. So they're saving lots of money and people are not having to call everybody. So this is, the the state wants to replicate it statewide. So we're happy about that.
Couple interns put that together, didn't they, to begin with?
What's that?
A couple interns put that program together.
No, they did a study.
Study.
On which we based it, but our staff plus medic person, IT guy at the Medicaid office actually developed the website. Yeah, we're pretty happy with it. But yeah, the nursing students are a really good source of of interns for us and they do a lot of good work in the senior disability services. After the death of our former grants manager, Pat Foley, we had a couple of people filling in in the grants management job for a while until we found a permanent person. Now we found a permanent employee. He comes to us from California. He has well over a decade of experience with in the Department of Emergency Services in California statewide. And his job was to review and manage federal grants, Department of Homeland Security, Department of Justice and FEMA. So he comes with a lot of experience in federal programs that we don't have a lot to do with. So he's instantly enlarged our scope in terms of our knowledge base of these programs. And he's also actively right now, he's been thrown into managing the kinds of grants that we more normally have here, CDBG, the, what is it, the clean, what is it, Clean Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund? I hit, that's such a, anyway, there's that and Seismic Retrofit. He's working with the Jacksonville Fire Department to try to get them some radios. So he's getting into the local scene, but if if you have any grants you're thinking of with federal agencies like FEMA or Homeland Security, or probably not Department of Justice, but FEMA, Homeland Security, he's available to help you write those grants or to review them or whatever you'd like and any grant really, but those are his particular specialty. His name is Peter Town.
Police station.
Yeah, that's right. He he he's good, the interoperability part of it. He's been heavily involved with communications. And finally, you know, our long term and beloved principal planner, Dick Converse, is retiring at the end of April. He's had a long and storied career helping our jurisdictions with their land use planning. And we did find a replacement and because his position is so important to so many of our jurisdictions, for the first time ever, we managed to do a three month overlap between his replacement and Dick Converse. So we did hire a local boy, Southern Oregon at least, Nolan Ryan, Ryan Nolan, sorry. Confusing him with a baseball player. I can't get that out of my head. Nolan Ryan, Ryan Nolan, Ryan Nolan. Anyway, he's 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 doing well. He's gotten some some good reviews and plus he brings something extra, just like Peter Town does. He was the recorder slash administrator in Cave Junction for a number of years. So for our smaller jurisdictions, when they have a gap between outgoing manager and incoming manager, he could fill in that gap. And that hasn't been something that we could offer in the past. So that could be very helpful in the future to our smaller jurisdictions. Finally, in terms of costing as little as possible, I think we've we've managed to continue to strike that balance between, you know, managing our salaries and benefits on the one hand to keep them to a level that our jurisdiction's going to afford so we don't price ourselves out of the market, but at the same time, offering enough in salary and benefits to attract and keep the kind of people who have the expertise that our members expect. So, you know, so far, so good. I think we got a little crazy with our cost cutting in the past and we went about at least 10 years longer with an absolute horrendous carpet that was more duct tape than carpet. But during that bad carpet decade, we managed to cut dues significantly and in Phoenix's case, 70%. Your dues are now 70% of what they were 10 years ago. And now they continue to be at the lowest rate they ever have been for the cog and we finally got new carpet. So it all turned out for the better and we're happy where we are. So that's it.
All right, cool. Question, any questions from Mike?
Yeah, are you able to, I was in the employee meeting the other day, I was looking at how our dues have gone by $2 or something silly like that. And I was curious, so how are you supplementing outside of dues paying members? How are you supplementing the overall budget to Peter's staff? Is that for grant funding, federal funding?
Good question. Several years ago, well, first of all, the first cut that we made, I just decided we needed to make it just because when you're in a job like mine, you're really sensitive to shifting water, so to speak. And I started to get a feeling like our dues were just too high for the region and we just needed to cut it and we just said, we'll deal with the consequences. And it was a little tight for a while. But about five or six years ago, the feds changed their rules in terms of indirect. You know, you can charge indirect on your projects and that that covers overhead costs. So they finally allowed you to add to your indirect rate a reasonable percent for upfront costs, walk around costs, project development costs, some grant writing costs, research you need to do to get a project to a point where you can apply for money. So I thought much better to add a little bit to our indirect and then further reduce our dues and principally because most of our money, the majority, a little bit over 50%, comes from our federal and state agencies. So we are basically spreading out the cost of tending to our jurisdiction's needs. We're spreading that out further than we than we could have if we just relied on dues. So it made it made a lot of sense to do that and that's how we managed to to equal that out.
Okay, thank you.
Food and Friends Building, we talked about a little bit.
Now I'm jealous. Now I'm not going to be happy with the Food and Friends Building in Grants Pass.
But that's coming on okay, right? Couple more months?
I think by the end, you know, reveal, you're so lucky you didn't rehabilitate a building, that you just built it from scratch. I mean, at the end of this thing, it's a 50 year old church that we're rehabilitating and there might be a two by four somewhere in the end that's original to the building, but we've had one issue after another with this. I would never rehabilitate a building that old again.
Sorry to bring it up.
Yeah, yeah. And we're still at it, but it should be done in June and then our our Senior Meals Program in Josephine County will have a home and we'll be able to add the county's first adult day foster care, day foster care for seniors. County's never had service before, so we have a partner who's coming in and a private sector partner, but we'll be able to offer that. So the building's bigger than we need, so we had some additional space. So they're going to do that and then a couple of other senior enterprises are going to come in and put in something similar to a senior center, but not at a senior center level, but they'll be able to, for promotional reasons, be able to offer that service. So we thought, you know, that's a really good use for the space and it'll help pay for the building.
Cool. All right. Well, thanks, Mike. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. We're going to move into public comments. Now, I want to go out of order a little bit. I'm going to have Sandy Wyman up first, okay? And then we'll get Sheila up here.
Sandy Wine, 109 Abbey Street, Phoenix, Oregon, member, commissioner, whatever, Parks and Greenway. Well, I'm here to give you an update on the Phoenix Annual Easter Egg Hunt, which is a go. First of all, we want to thank Chris in advance because ever since we started this event, he's been the master of salamones and he's doing it again and he does a great job. And I think last year you used these high schools PA system, Chris? I can't remember.
Well, the combination thing, but the PA system up in the the box with the.
Well, I'll get that squared away so you know how that's doing and.
And I had a guy with me who was bilingual, so we did the Spanish.
Yeah, so, well, that'll come up in a minute. But the other thing of high priority is we're formally inviting the entire council to volunteer and participate in the event on April 20th. We're especially excited because we think Robert will be the Easter Bunny. We're not sure. We'll see.
I see that.
If he doesn't respond, we'll have to find an Easter Bunny in Phoenix. Okay, oh, by the way, Nancy would be here, but she had car trouble. She's the chair and she's sitting somewhere waiting for a tow truck, poor thing. All right, now running along, we've got the police department. I think we're coordinating Chief Bauer with Tim Bailey.
Oh.
Yeah. And we've got the fire department, District Five. We've got Tina as our coordinator and they do great things. If if Chief Bauer's fingerprint kits come in, they will be extremely useful as usual for the parents to have. And they like the patrol car, too. The kids like crawling around with the amazing lights, you know? And of course, the fire truck is a big hit. So these are great entertainment features for the kids. We're working with Lisa Robin at the high school in her leadership group so that they can do some helpful things and Thomas the Custodian, who is also a really dedicated worker at this event. Now, entertainment, we've got face painting, we've got a photo backdrop, we've got, we think the Easter Bunny, we've got a large stuffed bunny that we're going to do a prize if they name the bunny, you know, whatever kid we, and maybe you, council, can pick the prize winning name. Hey, why not? And Eggs for the Hunt, Teresa has already purchased, flyers we're doing, we'll hand those out to Orchard and Phoenix Elementary probably next week. Banners, we've got those. Baskets are coming in from generous donations from people around town. Snacks and water, we've got bottled water coming from Iron Skillet Petro, very generous bottled water and snacks from Ray's. They're going to give us a gift certificate so we can buy healthy food because they're going to eat enough candy there. We'll buy some granola bars, really make them happy. And I may have forgotten some things, but I just want you to know it's happening, it's getting done and it's a community event that we've had for, I think, four years now, maybe more. And I think we need to, oh, go ahead.
There were like three to five, it seemed like 500, really like 200 to 500 people there last year.
Oh, God, yeah. And 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 basically, we need to keep community, community events going in Phoenix. I think that's what binds a community. Parks and Greenway members are happy to help, happy to help. We're few, the brave, the Marines will do it. And we'll continue with Dog Days, we'll continue with the parade, the homecoming parade, we'll continue with Fall Festival, we'll do new events. I think we might do a suggestion Mariana had for a kind of a an Arbor Day in the fall. I mean, we'll just try and keep doing whatever can keep Phoenix as a community together, meeting together. Because I think that's a goal we might want to keep in mind.
Date and time again?
Huh?
Date and time again?
Oh, April 20th, we'll start letting the crowd in at nine. That gives us time to set up in the morning. We'll need volunteers to set up, man the event, excuse me, person the event and clean up. So it'll be over by noon. That hunt is like a five second event, right, Chris? I mean.
Yeah, at 10 o'clock, it can just go wild, like.
Yeah, but there's other stuff going on, so they're happy to stay for a couple hours. Questions? Any suggestions that, you know, we can make it even better? I welcome.
Dog Days of summer not not happening? Dog Days of summer, is that?
That'll happen if we don't get smoke and thanks to our, our friend, maybe we can.
Oh, he left.
Well, anyway, thanks to all the good work I think the state is doing and firefighting and the proactive management they're doing, I'm hearing about, I'm reading a lot about it. If we don't have smoke, we'll have it. Last year, we got smoked out. And people were disappointed. It was a great summer event, yeah. Mostly the dogs were disappointed, no, just kidding.
Thank you.
Oh, there's another person I need to thank and that's Kim. She's going to do all the processing for the adult volunteers because we need to do that. It's not a school event, but it's an event with kids. So we've got some adult volunteers stepping up to the plate, we do, yeah.
Thank you very much for your help and all you do. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, Sheila, you want to come up and? Sheila's with Phoenix Counseling and they're going to have an event and they need some space.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here with some friends at Phoenix Counseling as well. And thank you for reading my email of of introduction. I've been with Phoenix Counseling now for about two and a half years and I have noticed our focus is changing more and more into educating the community and that's what this event is about. I did set a date on this for April 9th and I have been advertising that in one way or the other. And then Ariel came and talked to Erin. It was her idea that maybe we could use this space for that event. And I don't know if we're too late for that, but anyway, I would appreciate any consideration that you may give us. This is community education. It is to break the stigma of addiction. It is to help families achieve personal wellness. So the title of this series is called Do You Know Someone Who May Be Affecting You By Their Use? So it is going to be a support for community members who might be associated with somebody who is struggling in their addiction. So we will teach them about addiction and we will talk about a brain disorder. We'll also talk about, that's the the brain disorder versus the moral model. And then we will talk about stages of change and how people sometimes don't get into recovery because they don't understand their stages of change. And we'll talk about what loved ones or people concerned about those people can do to help them move along in their stage of change. And then we'll talk about what treatment looks like. I think sometimes people avoid treatment because they don't know what it's going to be like when they get there. Very often, we see that the people that we serve are mandated to treatment. Somehow, it didn't get caught before DHS or probation or DUI got involved. So it is our goal to help before that happens. And then finally, what is recovery? What does it look like for the one with a substance use disorder and what does it look like for family members or for those who care about somebody with a substance use disorder?
So Sheila, you have four meetings coming up. The first one's on the 9th of April. After that, are the meetings once a month or a couple of months or?
Well, I'm sort of open and I think I'm right now just in the very experimental stage. I honestly do not know how many people are going to come. We have it slated right now in the family room of one of the houses that we occupy. And if a lot of people come, it's just not going to work. So if there is a big turnout, I would love to do this every four weeks and then, you know, maybe take a week or two off and then four weeks again. Nothing is written in stone here.
And do you have the funds to pay for facility or are you looking for a donated facility?
We are looking to partner with the city of Phoenix to use maybe a space like this. We do not have the funds. We don't have the funds to rent a facility. I am the facilitator and I am donating my time.
Thank you. So, you know, the council can make decisions on the fly if there's smaller decisions. I always like to agendaize things, of course, so the public can have their input and their say about whether we should give away space for free. But she's in a pickle for a place for the 9th that's coming right up. It's a council decision and we could donate space for one time and then do it like we normally would do it over time. Maybe somebody can donate some funds or they can work on some kind of funding for the for the future meetings. But it's a little bit unusual, but I want to open up a little bit for council. But it's a little bit unusual, but I wanna open up a little bit for council discussion, even on his public comments. Comments, guys?
I have comments. I think the Civic Center was built for stuff like this. We need to help these people that are hurt. I know people that have gone through this. I know people that have gone through your facility. I have a question, though. One, I just get your opinion. You know, I understand that a lot of times people, they go through their recovery or whatnot. But the problem is that they don't necessarily have a place to stay. Maybe they go back and stay with their old roommate or their old friends. They fall into those same environments, you know. Become a product of the five people... You know, it's one of our personal things. You sort of become a product of the five people you spend the most time with, right?
That's right.
And if you go back into what those places, those places where you fell into that trouble before, you're likely to, you know, repeat history. Do you speak to that at these? Do you talk about how, you know, I'm not saying we need to donate this space for people to come live in, right? I totally, I think what you're doing is great, and I applaud, I commend you.
Thank you.
And I don't know, you have any thoughts on where we can find different housing for these people so they don't go back into that same slot, if you will?
Yes. Email or call your legislator up in Salem. We were up there just a few weeks ago at the Oregon Recovers Rally for the advocacy day. There's a couple bills put up there now that would create recovery communities. They would be led by peer support folks. And so that's what we need. And that's what we're asking the state to allocate some money for. We have the money. It's called syntax, right? But sometimes it's not getting allocated to maybe the best places that would give us the biggest impact.
So you have speakers at all of these? So basically, it's your forum? You come in, just have somebody speak and take questions after they speak to it? Or how does that work?
I have created a PowerPoint, 70 slides and a lot of notes. And I hope just to generate a lot of discussion, sort of like questions and what can we do, yeah.
Well, I'm not for making decisions on the fly at all, but I think this is a good cause to say it.
I think one thing that I would propose is we wanna make sure that we have the equity. First, I mean, thank you for everything that your organization is doing. I think this is critical, especially in Selma, Oregon. And critical to be doing this work and having this conversation. I think we also, when it comes to use of public facilities, we wanna make sure that we have equity and that we have clear decision-making processes. So it might be cool of us to have a conversation about if an organization comes to us and they're doing something that's episodic or serial, that means they could be using the community center, or, I'm sorry, the civic center in the future on a regular basis. That maybe we can, like, from the first meeting or something like that. Because I think that that's a good incentive to get people using this space. I don't know if that's a thing that you would be able to continue to do. I know that, you know, Kimberlin knows our rates and everything. But we just wanna make sure that we're making an equitable process for all the different groups who live in this.
I understand, and thank you. And if there was any way at all, you could give me some other ideas about how to raise funds for that, I am completely open.
Yeah, well, we haven't heard on that, but I'm curious about those things.
Just a dovetail on a thought, I was thinking to myself that we should agendize this so that we can, so you plan out future meetings and try to raise funds. And we'll do it with a normal type process. Then maybe next meeting, I don't think it'll be a long conversation. Next meeting, we could discuss how to proceed with things of this nature. But I'd like to see the council give staff the ability to say, hey, okay, we'll work with if possible on that particular date and do it gratis at this time for this one event. But that's my thoughts. Angie?
I was just wondering what, Erin, how do you feel about that, on the fly, doing that? Is that, what's your opinion on it?
Well, I don't have the authority to waive the fee, so that's why I speak for you. So I can't really speak to that.
How much are we talking?
I'm sorry, can you read yourself?
How much are we talking the fee would be that we're talking about waiving?
It depends on which room she wanted in, and it would depend on how long that they needed to set up and how long the meeting was. There's just many different factors. Will we have to hire a janitor to clean up after them? You know, there's just a lot of different things, so we would have to talk a little bit more in detail about that.
It'd probably be counter's corner, the smaller room, which is, that would work for them.
It would, I don't know if there's any more chairs available for that room, but it seems like that size space would be fine.
So then it sounds like we're not gonna be able to probably have that conversation before your series starts.
Right.
But it sounds like we're wanting to have that conversation and seeing, you know, how we might be able to accommodate future events. If that's possible, does that sound great for our folks?
Yes, but we do have the authority to waive a fee one time, and we could do it in this case here. Council could do that. Erin can't do it on her own, but we could waive a fee one time and have her work with staff on this particular meeting. And then going forward, have some kind of fee schedule. That's an idea.
To Sarah's point of having it, equity across the board, does that mean that we would consider everyone who comes before City Council with a good thing as the same one? There's a free first-time use?
I think we probably have to have that conversation with the council and bring staff into the conversation also.
Yeah, we do get a lot of people wanting it for free.
And to set precedent if we do it once?
Well, we'd have to come up with a policy as to how to handle it, but it's up to the council.
Well, there's a couple of components here. One is the hourly rate, and there's also the deposit for cleanup. Is there another? I think there's only two things they'd be concerned about financially, right? So it would require money either to rent it by the hour and/or at the same time have a deposit which is refunded if the place is cleaned up.
I'm sorry, we don't do that anymore.
Oh, you stopped doing that?
No, we, it was becoming too difficult, so now they just pay a janitorial fee after the end of each event.
Okay. I stand corrected. They've changed the process since I last rented the place.
How much is that janitorial fee?
Today, it's 50. It might go up next to the school year.
So for two hours, a counter, how much money are we talking?
I believe it's $30.
$30 total?
It's a minimum of two hours to rent counter's corner, yes. So it's $15 an hour.
So we're talking $30?
Each time?
80. No?
80 with cleaning.
But if the place is clean when they leave, they get the $50 back, right?
We're not doing it that way unless you guys, because staff would still have to go back and clean it up.
Chief Polk, do you wanna chip in?
I would be completely happy to clean.
Chief Police wanted to chip in also.
I have a question for, how much for the path?
I believe it is, I believe it's $25 an hour for a nonprofit.
How long you should be in there?
Two hours.
And then $50 for the... So $100, probably $9 hours.
I'll split it with you.
There you go.
I'll split it with you, Chief.
Thank you. That's awesome.
That's a precedent setting that we have financed.
I understand, but we'll agendize this with the council. I have further discussion on it.
Okay.
The logic, coordinate with staff, okay? I know you're already starting to coordinate with staff, but you'll need to talk to Kimberlin, Breland, or the city manager and try to coordinate things. And it's coming up pretty quick, so I might want to do that tomorrow if it's impossible.
All right.
All right, Sheila?
Okay, I will do that.
Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
You're welcome. Thank you, Erin. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. We've got three things on the consent agenda. One is the council log update from the strategic plan. Another is the Fury Road project bid award and the Two on the Knife River supposedly, respectively. And then also the minutes from the last meeting. Does anybody wanna pull anything from the consent agenda? Or have any discussion regarding any item on the consent agenda? Here, you know, I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
I moved to approve the consent agenda as presented to us.
A second.
Any more discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Next up on the agenda is... A fire mitigation discussion. I got a call from Channel 10 today, by the way, guys, and they did some kind of segment on the news regarding this issue. Seems like when you put fire mitigation on the agenda, the news channel started calling. So Erin, what's your feel as to what's going on, okay?
Sure, I don't have, I don't have a great deal of detail, but I did wanna let the council know that I was able to get ahold of the railroad. And I have a meeting set up with the mayor and I, the railroad. I think it's 10:15 on Thursday, if I remember right. So we will be walking a section of the line, I believe, and looking at some specific areas that we have concern. I also was able to talk to the county, and I'm gonna follow up with their property manager in regard to permission to be on county land. It's my understanding that there's an IGA that we can sign. But what I'll do is I'll bring back, well, I guess the options are to clear the property ourselves. At this point, they're not in a position to pay to, or they're not in a position to do the work to clear the helicopter pad, is what we call. So the real option is to allow the city on their property to do brush clearing and cutting if we wanna do it. But, or we can hire the community justice folks to do that work. But I'll come to the council with some additional information on that.
Are they indicating us whether they would help us out with the cost?
No.
We do the work? They're saying they will not help out with the cost whatsoever?
No.
Yeah, I don't like that idea.
Do you know how much the jail guys charge?
I'm sorry, I don't have the amount. It's not a lot.
Seems like it's pretty reasonable, right?
It is, yeah. For labor, it's very reasonable. But there are portions of the helicopter pad that probably deserve more attention than, you know, a manual, like weed-eating kind of thing. There probably needs to be equipment and a blade brought in and things like that, or plowing the field. So I don't have a lot of new information, but I did wanna let the council know that I have made at least a couple of contacts or more.
Will you send a letter to the county, the official letter, asking for assistance?
No, he said that he would send me a letter if we wanted. But we've had multiple conversations with both commissioners and the county administrator. And the answer is the same as it has been in the past. They're not going to do additional work on that piece of property outside of what they would normally do. And that is basically, they don't...
Nothing.
Right, right. And they don't want to invest additional funds in that property. You know, so when we're talking about partnering, it's not a monetary thing that they're willing to add to that. They're willing to allow us on the property to either trespass people and/or cut brush, remove brush, so.
And the whole goal is to have a perimeter or a section of the, a strip of land that acts as a fire barrier between the main part of the 31 acres and the homes and Rose Court Apartments, right? And Rose Court Apartments has people that live there that are disabled. They're in wheelchairs, some are blind, some have mental challenges. It's not like they can pick up and run right away. Angie and I were with it before, Terry's been with it with me also. So that's my largest concern is being able to have that. And I walked the area with the fire chief. They set a 50, I think it's 50 to 80 feet line between the homes and the fences and the rest of the brush out in the fields would give the fire department a jumpstart on things, or give them some area to work in.
And if I could add?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that the county does do a right-of-way cleaning for the railroad, the railroad contracts with the county. I don't know if that's 50 feet, but it's my understanding that they do maintain what they consider to be a fire break between the rail and, you know, the private property.
Right. So it looks like it might cost us some money, but maybe we should get some bids and just get some people out there and check it out and see what they can do. And like Ray was saying, like, I believe also, the first time around, it's gonna be a little more expensive because there's this dead trees and old dead bushes out there. But once that debris, or the larger debris is cleared out, then you're dealing with grass. And you're dealing with weed whacking versus cutting down trees and removing huge chunks of old bushes that are out there. So I think first year is gonna be a little more expensive, but to maintain it after year one, I think it'll be a lot less money. But I really wanna get something done on that. We just can't let it go for another year. Something happens and fire, you know, it's a windy day and fires start spreading, it could be a real disaster for Phoenix. And we're really gonna make it happen this year before fire season.
Aren't you gonna be meeting with the railroad tomorrow, is that...
We're meeting with them, I think, Wednesday, Thursday?
Thursday? So I'd like to hear how that conversation goes. I think that if this is something that we can get either, you know, private property owners to help chip in for, or the county, which it sounds like is not gonna happen on the railroad, that makes the most sense because we don't have this budgeted right now.
Yep, that's right.
Also, one of the other things I think we need to discuss and figure out is, and we don't have an estimate around this, but we're really down in our public works department right now, or we're going to be. Like, we're losing like a third of our public works department, three people on a bay, and that's a lot. That's not a small amount. And so if we're gonna try to do this in-house, that's a big deal. So I think what I would like to do is continue this conversation after we hear back from what you all discussed with the railroad.
And also getting some bids for the work, which is people out there and look at what the work is, and they come back to us with a bid that says, hey, we can remove it first time around, it's gonna cost, you know, 5,000 or 1,000, whatever it is. We need to get some pricing also.
So we're talking about doing a bid to outsource the work?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
May I clarify? Because I wanna know from the council's perspective if that means clearing the helicopter pad or if that means a 50-foot buffer from private property to, you know, either the county or the railroad property. Because there's a difference. If we're talking about clearing the helicopter pad, that's more than the buffer.
It is also just mostly grass out there, right? Is there trees out there?
Well, the whole thing is 31 acres. That would be a huge endeavor. It's, you know, when you go out there and you look at it, it doesn't look like it's that big, but it goes back a long ways. The total of 31 acres, five different tax lots. And, you know, what I'm thinking more about is having just a fire break as, that's the recommendation of the fire department. I don't think we're looking to clear the whole thing. It would just be a huge, we used to actually plow it years ago. There's long stretches of grass. We would go out there and till the soil once per year. I guess the county's not willing to do that. But my main concern is getting a fire break, clearing the whole thing would be a huge amount of money.
Huge.
Yeah.
And not really necessary.
You've been out there too. It's a lot, a lot of stuff.
But a buffer would be good, a buffer would be good.
Get up a buffer, and you gotta have the police to rate with it. Last year, go out and clean out, people are camping out there. You went out there, Terry, and there's fire pits.
If we had a good buffer, nobody's gonna be staying there. I mean, if there's a good buffer, if everything's ground level, I don't see anybody like there. They'll go back into where it's taller.
Well, they will, but if a fire happens where it's taller, that's the problem.
Oh, I see, so like sweeps.
So you just can't have campers out there, period, because they are, you know, having fires and they're smoking and...
And I'm sorry to belabor the point maybe, but that's why I'm asking about the buffer versus the field. Because if we're talking about 50 feet from, say, the fence line, the people that are camping, many of them are outside of 50 feet.
Right.
So that's a different animal. That's why I'm asking about clearing the field versus a fire break.
Well, in my view, it's doing a fire break and keeping campers out of the rest of the area.
Okay.
But it's two different subjects. It's two different subjects.
It is, but last year, we got permission from the county administrator to go out there and trespass people. We, I think that order still stands. We can go out there and trespass people that are camping out there. There were huge, gigantic campsites. There was dozens and dozens of people camping out there, and they were removed. So the, you know, you get spark, you get oxygen, you got fuel, right? So the spark, hopefully, was gone. The oxygen is still out there, of course, but the fuel is what we can also control. So the two things we can control are the... So the two things we can control are the spark, which are the campers, and then the, the fuel or the, the fire break. And to boot, I know many people listening on, on TV or on Facebook, it is not accessible, there are no roads that go into that. So the fire truck one time had to go over the railroad tracks and it broke part of the fire engine. So it's not very accessible either. And my biggest fear is that it's a windy day one day, and there's some transients camping out there, and thirty mile an hour winds hit, and it just jumps the fire break and starts hitting some homes that are along the railroad tracks.
Can't they access that off Coleman Creek, down the Dent Road?
No, well, there's, there's only one access, like, I guess they could...
Right before the S turn, right before the S turn.
Yeah, but it is, it is pretty inaccessible.
I would want to drive a fire engine out, you could get fire personnel there.
Council, Westover.
So, two things that I'm thinking, one, if we are talking about then doing like sweeps for transients in that area, which is again, not, not Phoenix, right, not Phoenix City Lowlands, then we're using city resources to expend police time and potentially, you know, other resources to do that work. And secondarily, then, without having a broader conversation about houselessness and about, you know, the nature of how that works, I think, I've mentioned in this space before that access to the study in the last couple of years, and they found that eighty percent of the people who live along the Greenway are homeless in Jackson County, are actually from here, they're not transients, as that work gets used. So I think that if we're gonna have a conversation about starting to use city resources to move transients out of a non-city area, right, one, we need to have more conversations about how we deal with that as a systemic issue, because what we find over and over again is folks come back. When you don't have a place to live, when you don't have a place to go, you do these big sweeps, people come back. So I think we need to have, like, if we actually want to have a conversation about that issue, we need to have a much longer agendas conversation outside of this whole, this fire issue. Again, two, just talking about, I think, you know, fire mitigation is super important. I also want us to make sure that we're not, that we are having a plan for how we're going to fund this kind of stuff. So we need to make sure, you know, we could get a bid to see if we wanted to outsource that, how much it was gonna cost. It needs to go in the budget. I feel like a lot of the times we have conversations at the council level that are like, oh, you know, let's do this, and we don't have a, like, a space for it in our budget, we really need to. And then there's that additional question about like police time, too. City, using police time and resources and city resources to deal with a parcel of land that's not ours. And then last time we kind of bought it, too, what about the, the private property owners in that area? And are, we going to contact them? I mean, do we even have authority to contact them, because it's not even in the city? So those are, those are some of the questions I still think we need to address.
Correct, so. Let, let me hit a couple of points based on your questions. One is we did work with the sheriff's office, so it's coming in, and we did work with, with the sheriff's office in conjunction with our police force in order to remove, I'll call them campers instead of transients. So it was a combination of forces, us and the county. As far as the budget goes, the next budget cycle is not until July first, it's too late. We'd have to dip into, I don't know, it's five thousand or ten thousand, whatever it is, we'd have to dip into contingency this year in order to do a fire break. And to me, it's worth going to contingency in order to provide safety for the citizens along that stretch of, uh, land. So you're right, it's not budgeted, if we wait till next budget, it's July first before the budget starts, and then it's too late.
Aren't July, the firestorms that started last year were July fifth, when they took off and...
Yeah, and, and I hate to dip into contingency, but, and I don't know if you've walked out there or not, but everyone should go out there and walk around and just take a look. And you can just envision, and I was walking with the fire chief, and he's just shaking his head. And, and I asked him, how long would fire take to move about six hundred feet into the, into the brush? There's a camper out there and something happens, with some wind, how long would it take? And I said, would it take a half hour? He said, a lot quicker than that. And he was very, very concerned. So I know we'd have to dip into contingency this year and then budget for it in years out, but I don't think we have enough, I don't think we have a choice based on the intrinsic hazard of the area. And I do encourage everyone to go out there and take a look. And then your, your last point was the private property owners. And I, I've asked Erin to contact some private property owners that have properties. One piece of property near Bear Lake Estates, it's not even close to as, as dangerous, I feel, as the, the county property in back of Dano drive. But I've asked them to contact private property owners and ask them to be good neighbors and help mitigate the fire problems on the private property. But there's only, there's also the Greenway, you know, we don't have a lot of control on the Greenway. But if you look around the perimeter of the city, I've, I've gone through the perimeter, there aren't a lot of areas of concern. But there's three that I can think of, one is, is on Camp Baker Road. There's a couple of farm properties out there that back into, I think it's Tracy Lane and Huntley and some other areas out on Camp Baker. But it's nowhere near as dangerous, I feel, as the county property at the end of Dano. But Erin, did you want to chip in on the private property owners and...
Well, what I'm, what I would say is that it sounds like council isn't... Isn't a hundred percent on board with me contacting or using city res, resources for it. So I, I mean, you know, I guess I don't know whether or not I'm hearing from the council that everybody wants me to contact people that are outside the city's jurisdiction.
Right, well, granted, I have to come to some kind of consensus in a few moments. But Terry, you were gonna...
Yeah, I have a thought, I think that it's too bad that we can't do anything until January first. But I, I want to, I mean, because if we wanted to do it under a new budget, right, July first, I'm sorry.
That's right.
But the, the good news there is that, you know, that really, i- if we were, let's say that we decided, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna budget this in, and it'll be in the new budget. Why couldn't we schedule ahead so that even though we can't do it until July first, we do it July first? We do it early, before August, in the really hot months. That way we don't have to do anything out of the normal, you know, functions on this side of the budget. We can budget it in like Sarah's talking about. And, you know, because it's gonna take a few weeks to get bids, right? And there's a little bit of logistics, and really, by the time that, that weed whacker hits the weeds, we're only losing about four weeks. And I, I want it, I mean, I've walked it, I've walked it a thousand times, you know. And I, it is a problem, but it's a worse problem in the late part of the summer than it is in the early part of the summer, that's all I'm saying. And that, that if, if we can figure out a way not to dip into contingency or anything like that, I would be more on board. As far as sweeping, getting people out of there, that's not our responsibility. And if it was, I'd be all gung ho, but it's really not, it's not our place. That's, that's the county, and the county one that works with our department and do that, I, you know, they know what's best. But for us to send our guys out there to do that, as much as I would like to, really, I mean, I would really like to, I really don't think it's right for us to do it. Sometimes what I want to do isn't always the right thing, you know. So, the right thing is in quotations. But I, I think we leave that to the, you know, the county's gonna know what to do with that, that's their deal. I'm not, you know, I'm not here to throw anybody out of their tin. I just don't want their campfire to get in contact with those houses. And we can't go to those, those homeowners and say, hey, you know, we're gonna do some work outside of the city limits, so don't mind if we raise your rates, right? Well, that's not fair, that's not fair to them. I'm just sorry, this is my, my thought. So, I would say we budget it in for the next year, we do it in early July, before the fire season gets too bad. We go with a fifty-foot buffer, am I being specific enough? Fifty-foot buffer, early July. Let the county worry about the, the camper sweeps, and, and then we budget it in every year. You know, you made a good point earlier, once this is done right, it'll be easy to do it every year after that. It really will, once, once we get those, those, the, the initial brush knocked down. And there are tree stumps out there, there are, you're asking about that, Angela, there are, and they're nasty. I mean, the reason they're there is because when they tore out the orchards, they didn't want to deal with them, they're nasty. So, there is that, that's, they're gonna take a cat, you know, or an excavator. And that's my thoughts.
Anybody else?
Go ahead.
On individual citizens, their houses that are back there, isn't there, is there citations that are given when, when weed overgrowth happens in the rest of the properties? Is there something that would require them to, to do a fire break around the back of their house?
Uh...
Swing your mic over.
Oh. Citizens that live up against that, is there, is there citations that would be given for weed management that is not done? For city people behind, behind their houses, yes?
People in the city.
In the city with their houses that butt up to that area that have...
If their property, anything inside their property that falls under the city ordinance, so...
So they have to.
They have to.
So then they would be required to clean each one of those places up. There was one house that had cleaned it up really well when we were out there, but the others hadn't. But I think a lot of...
You're talking the east side of the railroad tracks.
Uh, yeah, talking from the railroad tracks onto their fences, but some of their property was outside the fence, the back of their fence.
It, it depends on the property lines.
Yeah, I guess that would, yes.
Yes, you would, we would contact anybody whose property line is out of the ordinance as far as weeds. Like, the little road that we, we contacted them every year to get them to go out there. We threatened to cite ODOT for the blank area next to the physical therapy place, and they go out there and cut their weeds, so...
Okay.
If it's in, if it's in city limits, we do contact the owners of the individual properties, they have to take care of it.
Okay.
We just can't threaten anything on the west side. I mean, we've threatened gambling, but there's...
I don't want to belabor the point too much, but I just gotta say that my number one concern is that, that property. And the transients out there that are having campfires in grass that's six feet high, dry as a bone, maybe not the most, I don't know, responsible, and I, I don't mean to be demeaning, but sometimes there's some drinking going on and drugs happening. I don't think it's the most responsible crew out there that's lighting fires and having Coleman stoves and fuel out there. And I think the likelihood of a fire starting from a campsite like we saw on the Greenway last year. How many fires were on the Greenway that started sweeping through the area in Central Point? There were, I, I think twenty-something fires on the Greenway last year. And I'm compassionate with people that are camping out there, but to have campers out in that area that's dry as a bone, six-foot weeds, lighting fires in the middle of the summer, and then having that fire creep up towards the fences and start hitting those old fences with the homes right there and, and Rose Court Apartments where people can't get out. I was over, I did a town hall meeting over Rose Court Apartments to talk about the fire danger, and I remember one lady saying to me, do they know? I said, what do you mean, do they know? And then the, the manager of the place said, does, does the people that are, that are first responders know that we can't get out? They can't just hop in a car, they can't run away. And Angie saw, I went there with you, there, there's brush right up against, it's literally ten feet away from a woman's home, right along with the Rose Court Apartments. So if a fire happened there, I'm almost, it, it worried me sick last year to think about a fire hitting there and spreading. It worried the fire chief sick. I mean, I know it's, it's, it's unusual for us to take money from contingency, but what are you gonna use the contingency for if it's not to protect the citizens of Phoenix from a potential fire hazard? It could be five thousand, it might be ten thousand, I don't know what it is. But I still feel we should get some bids, but it's gonna take ten thousand dollars for contingency, and then we reimburse that after the first, first of July, I'm all for it. And I hate kicking people out of a, a, a campsite because they have no place to go, but they can't be out in the middle of dry area, out on the county property, right, boarding our houses, lighting fires. Just can't happen, that's my viewpoint.
The Ashland Oak no fires went.
What's that?
The Ashland Oak no fi, no fires went.
Oak fire, right?
Yes.
How many houses, and, and that, there's at least one death from that.
From a fire.
So, like I said, you know, it's my number one concern, and I went house to house this year, of course, campaigning, and that concern, the two lane, one lane thing was mentioned a lot, but the, the major concern was fires. And that's my perspective, I'd still like to see the council give consensus. And we're gonna have to take a, I'm, I'm gonna call a vote in a while to see if we'd like to proceed with getting bids and possibly taking it from contingency, but that's, that's my viewpoint.
Angie, didn't you, before, when you did this, you talked about no one wanting to do it without the fire department out there when they were weed whacking and cutting those down for the fire risk? When did that start? Was that at the start of July, or was that in August, is it was...
You know, I can't remember the exact date, but I had, I contacted the, the railroad and, and the county, and they were going to go out there and use the, 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 the works crew, the justice wo, work crew to go out there and do some weed whacking and some mitigation of the debris out there. And I got a, a letter from the county that said, we can't do it because it's, it's too much, it's too far into the fire season, and we can't go out at this time because it might cause a fire. So I had to contact the fire department to be out there with the weed whackers, and, you know, they were gonna just close down the idea. And I said, that doesn't make any sense, I'll get the fire department out there along with the weed whackers, and you can work together. In case of the fire, the fire department's right there, and then sure enough, they came out and they did the weed whack, and did some mitigation. But there's a certain time in the, in the summer when you can't go out there, and you can't bring heavy equipment out there, you can't work out there because of potential for causing a fire, it's a double-edged sword, but that's, that's what happened last year, that's a good point. Anybody else?
I think we should get bids for the buffer.
So, one other question is, how do we decide what's the buffer?
Well, should we have fire chief's recommendation, should...
That's who, that's, yeah, that's who suggested the buffer. I was out there with the fire chief, not, not to talk, but the guy ju, just below him.
What, what dimensions, how far?
You know, I, I, I think it was, is it fifty or eighty feet? I can't remember the exact amount, but you get one of the fire guys out there and give you good ideas what they would like to see.
Can I also include, if you go out to a bid, I was like, just an estimate for what staff time is gonna cost? Because I think that's something we always need to consider when we make decisions, is, one, how much are we asking our staff to do? Because we have limited capacity, because we're a small city.
Yeah.
I think we just always need to ask that question. And two, you know, what's an estimate around staff time? Like, if the fire department is gonna need to be out there, if the police department is gonna need to be out there, if the city manager is gonna have to, you know, do a lot of connecting the pieces. I think those are just things that we, we need to be realistic about and know what the full cost of a project like this will be.
Thank you.
And do you know if it's done in springtime, would the fire department still have to be out there? I know it looks a little, a little dry now, but, but it would only be dry in the heat of summer that you would have to have.
Yeah, there's a certain point when regulations kick in, and you can't be out using heavy equipment in areas that are prone to wildfire. And it's not in the spring, it's gonna be, I'm not sure how far in the summer, but at some point in time in the summertime, depending on the rainfall, that's, they, they make the call, hey, you can't do the heavy equipment or weed whacking, or, you know, bring cars on property that are prone to fire, wildfire danger.
Do you know that those restrictions kick in during August typically?
Yeah, it all depends on the fire season, right?
Depends on the fire season, we have a good snowpack. I'm just trying to be optimistic.
Yeah.
What is contingency fund usually used for? What are some of the good reasons that we would dip into a contingency fund?
You know, I can't recall dipping into conti, contingency ever, since, you know, I've been doing this for almost ten years, but I'm sure we have. But I can't recall dipping into contingency before for something like this.
We gotta know the cost before we can even talk about that.
Yeah.
We gotta know how much it costs and how much we got.
Yeah, and the, the, the community work crews, I think, are four hundred to six hundred dollars per day, I'm not sure exactly the exact amount. But like Terry, somebody mentioned, they're not gonna be cutting down trees, they're gonna be doing weed whacking and maybe ta, taking out blackberry bushes, but they're not gonna be out, I don't think, I'm not positive, I don't think they're gonna be out there cutting trees, I could be wrong, but maybe, or pulling up old bushes.
Yeah, but those stumps aren't gonna be our issue, if that wind picks up, it'll be the grass.
It's the grass.
It'll be the grass they could cut.
And the small...
The stumps take a long time to start.
The small dead trees and the small dead bushes.
Yeah, but they would, you know, if they would knock those down like with an axe or something, you know.
Well, council, I, I, I'm gonna ask for consensus, I'm made, we gotta take a vote or just nod our heads? But I'd like to have our city manager go out there and get some bids as far as what's, what it's gonna cost to help mitigate and maybe get together with the fire chief and have him say, hey, you need fifty feet, sixty feet, whatever it is, and coordinate things and get costs together, staff time and other costs. I don't see using staff time to go out there and do the weed whacking and cutting the, the trees, it'll be a private contractor. So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna actually go around the table, is, is there more discussion, or, I don't mean to beat this to death, but that's what I'd like to see. Anybody else wanna have any input before we go, Jim?
I'm looking forward to the budgetary part, but what I think I'm saying for that would apply to this front-end piece, too. In order to decide what we're going to do in the budget process, we're gonna have to have something that looks like a matrix. And the matrix is each of the, each component of things that we, for somebody wants to do in this thing. And the matrix is each of the, each component of things that we, for somebody wants to do in this thing. Who's responsible? Who has given authority to us to do something about it? And what would the cost be to us or whoever to each of these components? Otherwise, you can't get a bottom line, and with right, right now, it's a amorphous thing, there's a lot of different components. We've gotta organize the data. And if we organize it, we can get it to the budget process, we'll know that this costs, this costs, this doesn't, this costs. On the front end, using the same process, I think if we could find out how much it costs for each one of these little components, then we would know whether or not it's affordable. And once you do, where's the money coming from if we're going to finance it? Bill payers.
I guess I, I thought the component was a fifty foot buffer, so if there are multiple components you need, you need to let me know what, what that matrix looks like.
Yeah, because I've heard a lot of discussion about the other area, like there, pretty, Green Lake Place and, you know, the area out there beyond the buffer. If we don't have the issues and look at each one, we can't vote on it.
That's, that's for the, that's for the council to direct me. It sound, I, I thought we were talking about a fifty foot buffer, but if there's more to it than, than that consensus piece needs to be.
Can somebody make a motion? Because I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that we're on the same page, so if somebody could.
I'll move, I can say. I move that we approve or that we direct, uh, Aaron to find bids for fire mitigation in the way of a buffer of, uh, whatever our fire chief recommends. Possibly get your three best bids. And send those to us, let us look at them, see what they are.
That's fairly clear and.
Was that fairly clear?
Yeah. Yeah, no, we're gonna specify the specificity of one part of the matrix.
Okay. We need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Um, council favor?
Yes.
Council Russell for?
Yes.
Council Van Leeuwen?
Yes.
Council Schmaler?
Yes.
And council Feller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, council. I know we took a lot of time on that, but it's important. Um, next up is item nine, an ordinance reading adoption. It's, uh, the first reading by title only of ordinance number one thousand one, an ordinance of the city of Phoenix to establish a Parks and Recreation Committee in chapter two point one three of the municipal code. Second reading public hearing would be on April fifteenth, two thousand nine. We'll open up the discussion for council, then we're gonna take, I guess we have one, we have one public comment. And, um, so, discussion by council?
I have, just in, um, what is written on section three on page thirty-nine under membership. Uh, just for clarity on, uh, what is written there, it says the Parks and Recreation Committee shall consist of five members. Um, in light of our last vote, I think it should say the Parks and Recreation Committee is a body consisting of five citizens to be appointed by the mayor with the consent of city council.
Can you say that one more time for what you'd like to see there?
I know we've talked about, in chapter, um.
Section three?
Yes, section three, we talked about, uh, five members and then they're part of state.
Uh, Parks and Recreation Committee is a body consisting of five citizens to be appointed by the mayor, uh, and it is just, uh, five members is all it is.
Got it. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, la- last time we tried to clarify that we wanted people that were Phoenix citizens to be on the committee, and you'd like to have that.
The words be changed to citizens?
Citizens, yes.
Anybody not okay with that?
Heather, just be.
Yes.
So, um, as I had this conversation last time, I've done some more thinking, and I wanna bring up things up. Um, so going back to kind of how this conversation evolved. Um, so this conversation about recreating the parks ordinance came in front of us because there was some perceived, like, trouble happening with the Parks Commission, so, um, some perceived that the Parks Commission was trying to exercise powers they didn't have, like directing staff or using funds. Um, and so, um, what actually was agendized, uh, was, I believe it was the mayor added it to the agenda to sunset the Parks Commission, which means to end.
Well, honestly, it wasn't my idea, but staff wanted it on the agenda.
Okay, so, um, so either way, Parks Commissioners were like, what, we're, we're stopping the Parks Commission? They had no heads up. They just showed up and they were like, whoa, what's that all about? Um, in the meantime, there was also some conversations happening, and I know that this was kind of controversial between staff and people. And the Parks Commission brought up some important issues around pesticide use. And I think some people on this council and some staff found that controversial or problematic, or I heard some people say that that went outside of the scope of their role, which I don't think it does at all. But I think that, um, during that time, a lot of butting heads started to happen with some people on the Parks Commission and some people on this council. And, um, what I'm seeing here, so the recommendation that the staff brought to us, um, the last time we met, was to keep, uh, the ordinance. When we drew a lot of the ordinance came from talent to clarify the role and scope of the committee. Um, but what they also did include, what the ordinance has included in the past for the last two iterations, is that there could be one member or even as many as two members who lived outside of the physical, um, city boundary. Um, and I find it problematic that, um, at this time when people started butting heads, um, because there was a controversial idea brought up, that now we're talking about removing people from the committee because they live a block outside of the city limits. And I think Phoenix has, um, honestly has like a bad history of doing these kinds of things that seem outright political and seem like when there's, uh, somebody that we don't agree with, we just find a way to, to get rid of them. And I think that we, what makes the city thrive is that we do have different ideas and we bring them together. And I'm really concerned, just based on the way that, uh, this person, this committee member has been treated in this space, that, um, I'm really concerned about what that means for how we treat our volunteers moving forward. And what it means to be a community member in Phoenix. Even if somebody doesn't live in the city boundaries, doesn't mean that they are not a, um, meaningful contributor to the city. It doesn't mean they don't go to our schools, doesn't mean their kids don't play in our parks, and we need to start treating people a little bit better. Because, uh, we've heard consistently, especially from women in the city of Phoenix, that they are being treated poorly, um, by members of this body and, um, others. And I think that's something we need to start taking really seriously, and this is something, um, that's hard, hard for me to bring up, but I think that it's really important. Um, we, we are talking about, if we pass this ordinance as it's written, we're talking about removing Rihanna from the committee, which will then bring the Parks Committee, by the way, we don't have a full committee, um, it'll bring it down to, um, four members. So if one person does not show up to a Parks Committee meeting, they won't have a forum. So at a time when we are struggling to find volunteers who are active and engaged and passionate about the issues, we're removing people for relatively arbitrary reasons, and, um, I think that hurts us. I think that hurts us a lot. Uh, I, I think that there's no reason for us to change having one or two committee members who live outside, especially for instances like this, when a person lives a block outside of the city of Phoenix. For all intents and purposes, that person lives in Phoenix, they are a community member, they deserve to have a voice. I hear the argument that folks were making last time about, well, you know, uh, people shouldn't be able to sit on committees unless they paid taxes, um, in the city, to the city. Um, and the thing is, is that the Parks Commission, they don't have the authority to directly spend money. They can make recommendations to the city council and say, here's what we think. And if we have one or two people who are on the committee who live near Phoenix or in the urban growth boundary, I don't think that that, um, that makes that committee susceptible to being like infiltrated by people who don't pay taxes. Um, I, this is something I've put a lot of thought into, I'm really worried about, and I would like to see a street Rihanna and, um, and, you know, who's been a very passionate committed committee member with the respect that she deserves. And I think that that means, going back to the original version of this ordinance that staff proposed to us, I think we can even that out by also providing that opportunity on our other committees. I think we can say one or two, um, people could be outside of, um, city limits, so long as it's, you know, within the general area. Like, it wouldn't apply to people living in Ashland, right? It would apply to people who live like on the periphery of Phoenix. Um, so we can provide them an opportunity to get involved with the city. We need more volunteers, and this feels unjust to me, so I have to say. Thanks.
I wanted to say that, uh, it had nothing to do with pesticides or herbicides, I think that is something that we should look into. Um, uh, and after checking with Central Pointe for Ashland, most cities do not include people outside of the city limits. And so, uh, in keeping with that, I, I think we are looking at the IPM that's coming up, it is, it is nothing to do with pesticides or herbicides at all. At the IPM, Integrated Pest Management, um, yeah, no, no, a different one, computers, um, yes, no, not at all, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I did have an idea, a suggestion, and, I mean, I do agree, block over, he's still part of Phoenix. But I kinda wanted to suggest that, you know, I know Phoenix has its own elementary school boundary. It's different from the city of Phoenix boundary, that we can still include Phoenix, people that are in the Phoenix School District, Phoenix Elementary School, not so much Phoenix Talent, which is the Phoenix area. But so much is to say, you're, you know, still, we would still like to be involved, but just maybe not have a vote. You know, still have to be involved, but just maybe not have the vote because you don't, you know, kind of compromise a little bit. That was just kind of an idea that I would.
It's like a liaison outside the city. That includes people from Medford, by the way, right? Because, yeah.
Just at Phoenix Elementary School border and boundaries that surrounds Phoenix, they, that includes people who don't live in Phoenix, residents.
A suggestion for them not to be, be a non-voting contributor?
Yes.
Got it.
Just a suggestion.
I'd be curious what Jim thinks, he's the smart one.
The problem I have is there has to be some status and some reason. I'm sorry, didn't hear you. There has to be some status of being a, a citizen of the city, and there's a reason for that. Those citizens either directly as property owners or as renters who pay property owners, pay the property taxes to take care of the things we do. Other people are guests in our house, and we don't exclude them. And any good idea that a guest in my house has to improve comes to me and says, I think we can do this better. And that's exactly what she can do. She does not have to be a voting member to do that. Nor should she be a voting member if her money is not at risk in this thing, because eventually, something's gonna be, come up for it to us that we have to spend money on. And I think that guests in our house can speak public forums, they can present information and get everything done that you've talked about. They just shouldn't be allowed to vote on it. That's, because you say a block away, how far away do you go before that stops being true? I have a sister-in-law that comes from California with a grandson, plays in our park, should she be on the committee? No, no, she's a guest in the house. I'm sorry that she lives outside the boundary, but she doesn't pay the property taxes to support that particular entity. So as a guest, welcome, come, tell us what you think, present your ideas, we'll listen to them, but you don't get to vote, it's not your house, sorry. That's the way the boundaries are. So that's where I'm at on this thing. I will not change my vote.
And I, I think last time, the, the two ma- the two major points were being consistent, one with the other committees, and having what we call skin the game, like Jim said, you're paying taxes. I, I hate to see it portrayed as a political move or a move against a, a, a certain gender or race, or I, I just, boy, that just kinda irks me. But, uh, last time we talked about consistency, skinning the game as a reason why we'd have people from Phoenix beyond Phoenix committees and commissions.
Yeah.
Terry, you look like you wanted to.
This is a really tight line, this is a tight line, because, uh, if you live just outside of the city limits, you really are, you know, I'm thinking more in the sense of community. And, uh, you're still in the Phoenix community. So, I mean, but if you don't pay taxes, I get the voting thing that Jim's talking about, I get that, I totally do. Um, I would say, this is, you know, and I'm not, this is just what I'm thinking. And, uh, I would say that I would still allow a very limited number of non, of non-Felix residents to serve on the committee. Um, I would do it, uh, peripheral mileage or something of that nature if we could figure out, because if you live, you know, if you live just out of town, and this is your town, I mean, if you live just out of Phoenix and you're still closer to Phoenix than you are to Talent, right? Or you're still closer to Phoenix than you are to Medford, um, I think you should have a say on the commission. Um, and I don't, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but I'm with Jim, um, if you pay taxes, you can vote on the stuff within the committee. If you don't pay taxes in this city, you could still serve on the committee as a non-voting member, but that's also, to also remember, remember that, uh, that you can be very persuasive on that committee and how they vote. You know, you can, as a committee member, you have a lot more power to, uh, persuade the voting members to vote the way you believe in. And you will be heard, obviously, because you're a member, but as far as laying down the final vote, that really, just my humble opinion, is to be done by citizens that pay the taxes here, it just does. Um, but I, but I would encourage people that live close to still participate in those committees and be active with, uh, with their efforts to do everything they can within the committees, like Sarah said, you know. Ultimately, they're gonna come before us for the final decision anyway, if it's a spending thing, what have you. So really, even though you're, as, as a non-voting member on, say, the, say Parks and Greenway, you still have a lot of pull over what comes to that chair, right? And so I, I would say you could have, you know, you, you said one, maybe two, right?
That's what the circumstance was before we changed it. It, it had been that way traditionally in Phoenix for, as long as the record was.
Right, and then I would say as long as that commission is full, you know, so let's say we get one person from Talent or one person from Medford, you know. Not to keep filling it up more and more until you have, have too many, but, um, but I can see, you know, if I live down at the end of Culver, I'd want a little say. And I would, but I, you know, but I, I would have to be understanding, I don't get to vote, but I get to sit in the room and we're gonna hash this out, um, before we go to council. I'm just looking for a compromise that works, works good for both parties. So I would say allow a non-citizen to vote in, in one, maybe two seats. Uh, to, not to vote, but to be on the committee, but to be a voting member on the committee, you have to be an actual resident of Phoenix.
Carry it a little further, can they be an officer on?
No.
No officership, no voting.
They're not voting, but how can you be an officer not vote?
A member that counts toward quorum that cannot be elected as an officer and cannot vote, is that what you're saying?
Right.
For all committees, all com- uh, commissions and all committees?
I had to thought that through, but, but at this point, well, at this point, I was so, oh, yeah.
Need to think about that. Also, if that is true, why is it not possible for somebody that lives within, I would make it up a mile of our border to be sitting on this council? What's the difference? There isn't one.
To have non-voting, so you're saying we should, if, if, under those, under that guideline, we should have non-voting, non-voting members on council?
No, not non-voting, full-fledged members.
Why? That's two, you're talking two different, that's apples and oranges.
No, they're all serving the government of the city.
If we have, if we have non-voting residents, if we have non-Felix residents serving on a committee but not allowed to vote, that's far different from city council.
That's your proposal, okay. I'm just saying that it, consistent, if you're gonna be consistent about your logic in applying it, and you want non-citizens participating in membership of things in the city, this council and this mayor's position should also be included. And if not, why not? Should they be on the budget committee?
Because, because these are elected positions.
By whom?
Citizens in Phoenix.
That's right.
Were elected by the citizens of Phoenix. So for us to bring in additional council, that would be by appointment, we don't have that authority.
No, we don't, we can change the law.
Oh, if you wanna go out of the, we can change the law, we could run around circles all night.
No, I'm just saying, real logic in what you're thinking, gotta think it through, not just a single data point. We have other committees and other commissions. Do you want somebody who's a non-citizen working on the budget committee, for example? If no, if the answer is no, then why should it apply here? Or the planning commission, or the planning commission, or any of the commissions. Logical consistency in behaviors is what I'm looking for, not illogical trying to warp around something. What's the logical consistency of this? What's the logical consistency of this? Citizens get to do it, others are guests. Guests get to come and talk. They don't get to vote, they don't get to be a member.
Right now, we have guests from out of town come and talk to us all the time.
He's talking about Chamber, he's talking about Chamber, not as a...
Come in and talk to the commission. Give your ideas. Commission votes on whatever they want to vote on, and they go to it. It's the same model we're using right here.
So regardless of what our intention has been, by removing the section where a non-member, a non-resident could be a part of the committee, the impact is that we are losing somebody who is still up, somebody who has volunteered their time. And during that process, they think, and this is, you know, from her own mouth, and the mouths of others who have come to talk to us about what it's been like to volunteer in Phoenix, has been really difficult and frustrating and disempowering. And so you think, whatever our intention was, whether it's logical consistency, as you say, Jim, or, you know, who has been in the game, or whatever it may be, the impact is that we are losing a committed community member, and we haven't even, you know, thanked her for her service or any of those things. So, and we, we were the people who appointed her to the committee in the first place, you know, so we're changing the rules, and that's causing some damage. And I think we just have to recognize that, and, you know, I'll go with whatever you all want to go with, and whatever you feel is important. But I want us all to recognize as a body, like, what this is doing right now in our community.
It is still that all the other cities have just citizens serve on it, so we are the odd man out on it. And the inequity, like we talked about earlier, the inequity is important to keep it right across all of the councils and committees.
I just want to push back a little bit on this theory that we don't honor or don't respect our volunteers. I just don't agree with that concept. And I've been doing this for nine years. I got a part of my newsletter which honors citizen volunteers, and I want them empowered, I want them to do a great job for the city. Sandy Wine did a wonderful job, same with the rest of the people that volunteer for our city. And I think in general, this council has and will continue to respect volunteers, empower them. We want more volunteers, and I don't think we're disrespectful of citizen volunteers. I think we honor them and treat them quite well. And I, and we disagree a little bit, but that's...
Well, it's not that I disagree with it. Several people have got up on this podium and said exactly that to us.
I'll say this, I personally have never treated our volunteers with anything but utmost respect.
Me too.
Absolutely.
And I don't like being lumped in with a group, yeah, hey, we were doing this wrong, like, no, really, I try to be nice every time.
I think it's not anything that's on one individual person. I think it's about a culture that we need to, we need to work harder on. Because we, over the last couple of weeks, we've had several people, including the day that we got, you know, it's the longest agreement about the MPO, the meeting following that, there were three people who got up and said, you know, I've had a similar experience being a volunteer in Phoenix. And I think it's something that we need to take seriously, when people get up and say, hey, I've, you know, I have...
I do take it serious, that's why I'm always so nice.
I know, you're right, you're right.
That's the whole thing!
And I'm not saying that my fingers replace blame, I'm saying, hopefully together, we can address some of the concerns that citizens have flagged in this space.
And before I go any further, I do want to open up the public comments. We have one person wants to talk to us, and then we go back to a discussion, whether Robert's idea, Terry's idea, Jim, Angie, and Sarah's ideas. But we do have Rihanna Sims that wants to speak. And you got your three minutes, you still up for talking? All right.
Is there any way that somebody else could also keep time? So my name is Rihanna Sims. I live at four two eight three Culver Road in Phoenix. I am here today to express my frustration about how I've been treated as a volunteer for the city of Phoenix. At the last council meeting, Lila, who is the volunteer highlighted, she's formerly of the Parks Commission, she actually read a letter from Dave, who is also at the Parks Commission, to express their disappointment with the interrupting and disrespect that's been shown to city volunteers. So actually, another person came in and read a letter about that, just last meeting. And at that same meeting, this recurring behavior was presented about interrupting and disrespect. Two members of the Phoenix Garden Club witnessed this behavior and also commented on its rudeness. This means that at the last city council meeting, there were four elders here who live in Phoenix, who witnessed and spoke up about how city volunteers were being treated. How sad for Phoenix. I'm also here today to express my concern because the city of Phoenix is closing off options for folks who live outside of the Phoenix proper to be part of city commissions. I am an eighteen-year horticulture professional, and now suddenly that my address has more to do with my participation in volunteering for the city than my, the professional skills that I'm giving to the city. It's sad to me that the city of Phoenix would rather draw lines in the sand than build a welcoming community that is thankful and gracious to those citizens who have generously given of their time. I want to remind you that the Parks Commission did vote to bring our concern about pesticides to the city council, and Senator, and, excuse me, Councilor Warren brought that forward as a future agenda item. This issue is not going away, and we really need to just have a, have conversation about it and look into it more deeply about how we're managing our parks. This last week, for the second time, California courts found that Roundup does have a direct link to causing cancer. The city of Phoenix is using that same active ingredient in our parks where our children play. Children who live inside the city of Phoenix are at risk of being harmed every time they walk into a park. This means that if the city of Phoenix continues to ignore this concern, we're putting both our staff and residents at risk. I don't understand why our city council here is more concerned about where commissioners live than what chemicals our children are being exposed to in the park. It feels strange to me that the city is so focused on who's a resident and who isn't with this word "skin in the game." As I've mentioned, I have two children who go to the park, and that's about as most important skin as I can have in the game. This is not a game. This is about our children's safety.
Running your three minutes.
How sad that my city is more focused on drawing lines than those, and that you won't hear the clear message that parks are for everyone, and everyone should be safe from harm in Phoenix parks. I'm just trying to do good for my city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I just want to point out that Rihanna is from the unincorporated part of the county, not a Phoenix citizen. And thank you for your input. So it's, here are discussions, a couple different items that we, you know, there's other items within the ordinance also we need to jump to and discuss, but let's button this one up. There's a couple people that mentioned different ideas. One was to include non-citizens on the committee. One was to allow people that are outside the city to be a non-voting member. Others are against having non-citizens on committees throughout the city. So council needs to...
I motion, I motion to leave it as passed last session and as revised. Did I make a motion for that?
We need a second. Discussion on that particular topic or motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilor Snyder?
Yes.
Councilor Puffer?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
No.
Councilor Westover?
No.
Councilor McLeary?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two. Any other motions we made before we button this particular part of the discussion up?
I just want to say that there's nothing personal, believe me, okay? I'm just trying to be consistent in the way we treat people. You will have just as big an impact in the past as in the present by simply attending as a member of the community and making your points. You will do that. And I know you're going to continue, please. I agree with a lot of the things you said. Roundup is becoming a bad problem for folks, and things are going to have to be fixed. But I think as a position, we should allow your fellow members of the Rogue Valley to allow the citizens of this city to decide for themselves what they want to do. Advocate all you want, and I urge you to do that because you've got a lot of right points. But do it the right way. As a citizen, guest in the house, make your points, and don't stop doing it, please. But allow the people who are the citizens to make their own decisions. And that's where I'm at on this thing. Great ideas, push as hard as you can, but recognize that because of where you live, you're not a citizen. But you can advocate all you want and do a good job of it. I'd really encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Any other comments on this item before we, I'm going to ask for other comments regarding the rest of the ordinance in just a moment. Okay, you guys, so I want to move the discussion to where we're talking about other things in the ordinance. Is there anything else anybody wants to change as our first reading?
We just made a motion to keep it as it is, it passed, so now we're going back for discussion.
Yep, I'm going to ask, is there anything else in the motion that you guys want, another motion in the ordinance that you want, it could be grammatical change, it could be anything that you see in the motion that needs to be screwed up?
Yeah.
I thought it was voted on, but...
Okay, am I mixed up? I could be...
There are a lot of things in the works that are not right.
Andrew, your motion again, just...
I motion to leave it as it was passed last session with the, with the fix of the language on section three.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were talking about, section three is kind of buttoned up now. But what I'm asking about is, anything else?
Yes.
Yes?
Same paragraph, second sentence begins with the consent of the mayor. It's really awkward. I would propose that we say it this way. The mayor shall appoint, with the consent of the city council, a member of the city council to serve as the liaison to the committee who shall not vote and shall not count toward a quorum. The actual sentence is in there, it's very awkward.
So, watch, can you read that one more time so that staff can be sure to note that? Oh, you've got it, you got it written down already?
Yeah, except there's a lot of things to come up. The mayor shall appoint, with the consent of the city council, a member of the city council to serve as the liaison to the committee who shall not vote and shall not count toward a quorum.
Okay.
It cleans up the language with that one.
Okay. Any disagreement with that change, guys?
No.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay. Section four, term of office. I would recommend this instead of what's there. Terms of office shall be for a period of four years and shall expire on December thirty-first of the year appointed to the term of the office. Vacancy shall be, vacancy shall be filled by an appointment of the mayor with the consent of the city council for the unexpired portion of the term of the vacated position. What we're trying to do here, at least as I read the original, we're trying to say if you're appointed, you're appointed for four years.
Yes.
Okay. But someone can quit, die, get fired, whatever. And so to replace that person, it needs to be an appointment by the mayor with the consent of the consent of the council.
Yes.
That's what I just wanted to try and say.
And did you give that verbiage to Aaron also? Okay. Anybody disagree with that change? Okay, next.
Okay. Section five, which is the officers. It's kind of straightforward the way it's written. Try this one on for size, it's a little bit longer. The duly-appointed members of the Parks and Recreation Committee shall elect from amongst themselves a chair, vice-chair, and secretary at the first meeting after which the committee is first appointed. An election will be held at the beginning of the first meeting of every second calendar year of the committee's existence to fill the positions of chair and vice-chair, because they're on a two-year term. An election will be held at the beginning of the first meeting of each calendar year to fill the position of secretary, because it was written up as, if you're an officer, you get two, if you're a secretary, you get one-year terms. Now, there's a question there, whether or not those are good years. Do you want, do you want this turnover to be every year? Or do you want the chair and the vice-chair to hold it for two years, and the secretary for one? I just, I wrote this based on what was already in here, but the real question is, what does the council want to do in terms of how long the term will be for the officers of the committee?
Any comments on that suggested change? I'm okay with it, okay, Aaron has the verbiage.
Yeah, I know there's some logic with the secretary being one year, but could you explain why that was put in that way?
Typically, people don't want to serve as secretary for more than a year. It's a, it's a job where, you know, they have more responsibility at every meeting. So the turnover...
Share the workload.
Yeah.
Do you have a word to say something?
Yes. But I know where you're coming from, she's saying she doesn't mind doing it, but if you don't mind doing it, it should be reappointed every single year, right? Yeah, okay.
Oh, is that, is that how it's written, though? That you can be reappointed? It says, terms shall not last more than a year. Should be written, terms a year, you can be reappointed, so that we don't, somebody doesn't think they're getting aced out.
It lasts a year, but you can be voted, voted, put another year, so you can be voted in against another year, another year, another year. Yeah, no turnover, training.
No, that's right, there's no turnover, I didn't think about that. Should there be turnovers?
No.
Okay. So we're kind of done with that one, or more comments?
I think so.
Okay.
Anybody have an objection?
No, okay.
Okay. The next thing I'm going to talk about is the experience I had in rewriting the bylaws for homeowners associated. I had to think through some of the processes that had not been thought through by the developer of Brooklyn's cookie cutter solution. And that is succession of officers. We've already talked about terms, two years and one year, depending who they are. I'm talking about a new section.
A new section, okay, go ahead.
Called succession of officers. Should an officer of the committee no longer be able to serve in that capacity or on the committee itself going forward, a process for succession for each officer's position will be developed by the committee and enshrined in the bylaws of the committee. In other words, what happens? Somebody comes in, your first meeting's in January, the group gets together, you're the chairperson, you're the vice, you're the secretary, a few months pass, and then one of them dies in a car accident. How do you replace that person? They decide to get really mad at you and quit. Die, quit, get fired. There's three ways to think about these things. How do you do that? I'm not trying to dictate it from here, but I'm saying, in the bylaws that they write, they need to have a methodology that addresses that. Okay? I'll give you an example of what we did in our bylaws. After the election, you have a one-year term for, say, the president of the board. In the first few months, if that president dies, quits, or gets fired, then we have to have an immediate succession, which is our secretary comes up and fills the job. Now, there's only two officers for three positions, and as quickly as we can, we hold an election with all the members to refill the position. Now, if you pull that down toward the end of the year term, let's just say at the nine month period, and somebody dies, you now have an immediate succession to run the place, but you don't want to have to hold an election with only a few months to go before you have to hold an owners' meeting to have another election. So we built into that, on the front end, you will take a meeting of the groups to elect new people. And as you get down toward the end, you don't do that, you suck it up until you get to the next year's meeting. So that was the way we did it with that. I'm not suggesting to do it here, I'm just saying they should have rules that cover what happens when somebody leaves or dies.
They got to formulate their bylaws anyway, and then the bylaws have to come to the council for final check and balance review and...
Yeah. I have a new section called bylaws.
Well, let's, let's do one thing at a time, so you say... Well, let's do one thing at a time, so you stay organized here. So, Jim wants to add a section called succession. And of course, the staff has all this information, right? Any objection with doing that?
No, sounds great.
We're not being too... Okay, great. Is he gone?
New section, bylaws. "The committee shall commence development of bylaws for itself as soon as possible after the first meeting. These internally agreed-upon bylaws shall be presented to the city council for its approval and/or amendment." So, it brings it back to us to handle that situation. And it simply puts the onus on them, we notify them that they, in the ordinance, that they have to have the bylaws. I know they're doing it. Yes.
Real quickly, so if we go back about, in section 10, it talks about the bylaws. So, would it be a new section or does it add to that?
You can add it wherever you think is appropriate. I'm just calling it a new section because I didn't have a number. However you organize it, it'll be fine, just so the content's there.
Okay. Is council okay with that?
To add it to section 10?
Yes.
Yeah, just to say they have to.
Okay.
Okay, next one. Section nine.
How many do you have?
This is the last one. The last one, I swear. Maybe not. Okay. If you take a look at what's already there, it says, "A member of the Parks Committee without a valid reason misses three regular committee meetings within the same calendar year, that member may be subject to removal from the committee." A draconian thing. "In addition, a committee member may be removed for misconduct, which means bad behavior, with the consent of the city council." There's some problems with that. There's no process here in order to reach that draconian end state. There is also no definition of what misconduct is that is so gross that somebody has to be removed. So, let me read what I got here. "If a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee misses X number of meetings during the course of a calendar year, that member will be automatically removed from membership. Therefore, you don't have to have a process for trying to figure out what's a valid or invalid reason for being there." X meaning whatever you want to fill in. "The members shall develop internal rules enshrined in their bylaws to determine the methodology of removal of an officer from an internally elected position." What if the people don't like the chairman that they elected, and it's in the middle of the year, and it's really, really bad? In the bylaws, they need some way to remove the person. Takes the methodology out. "The members shall develop internal rules enshrined in their bylaws to determine the methodology of recommending the removal of a member from the committee to the city council." Those are some of the things that were missing, but I don't know if everybody is good with that because one possibility is, you know, somebody misses, I just picked the number four. They miss four meetings in a calendar year, and they're automatically off. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? If it's a good thing, because they're just being lazy, it's okay. If it's a bad thing, then you default back to having to have a set of processes of how you're going to determine that it was inexcusable to miss those. And that all got to be figured out. You know, what are the rules for doing it, who gets it? Decision-making, dot, dot. And of course, the definition of what's valid and invalid. That's kind of a messy thing to do. So, I just go out, those are two polar officers who we're dealing with here, I just wrote it one way. So, just, you know, think for yourself about how you would approach that and how we would change what's here.
I like the point that we have a check and balance. It has to come to city council before somebody is removed. And I think allowing the Parks Commission to decide, you know, three meetings, but let them decide whether the valid reasons why someone should, that someone had, or invalid reasons, leave it up to the Parks Commission to determine what's a valid and invalid reason, and then it comes to us for a check and balance. I think we're covered there. I know it's a little bit draconian to let someone go from a committee. I don't foresee that happening, but if it happens, it happens. And it has to come to us for a check and balance. But let the Parks and Commission determine without having an automatic clause there. Three meetings or four meetings, you miss them, you're out. I mean, we had a counselor that broke his femur, right? Because he fell off his bike, he missed some meetings, stuff's gonna happen. And maybe someone passed away in the family, they missed a meeting. To have a clause automatically, you have to be fired from the committee because you missed three meetings or four meetings. That automatic clause, I'm not in favor of.
Why can't we just write in a protection clause for the member that says, "It's at the discretion," like, I like that, that it's at the discretion of the committee whether a broken femur is a good enough reason to miss the meeting or not. You know, because that can happen. You can have death in the family, you can have sickness, you can have all kinds of things. Something, sort of, it's just not, you know, you blew it, you're out. You know, we're having trouble, need to show... We're having trouble keeping our commissions, but we need to show some compassion.
Well, based on what you're saying, how about this as the first leading sentence? "If a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee misses X number of meetings during the course of a calendar year, which is a defined period, that member will be recommended for removal from membership." And down below, removal requires coming here. And then they would both, the committee itself and the individual, if they wanted to stay on, would have to tell us why, what happened, and we would decide if they stay on. I think that's what you're talking about.
But will, it's only the word "will" be recommended for termination. May be recommended. I don't want to have it hard and fast on what you just said.
Or instead of termination, why don't we say will be evaluated?
Yeah.
Will be evaluated. And if it's evaluated where they were, you know, where Barclays on those nights, that's what... You know what I'm saying? Or if it's evaluated, they had a really valid reason.
Well, if you go with will is hard and fast, the committee's off the book, it comes up here. If you go with may, they have to have an internal methodology of their own in the bylaw program to decide whether or not that person should be recommended to us. It's a safety feature, and it's probably a good, you know, pressure release point, but it puts the onus on them to decide whether or not it's bad enough to bring it up here. Because it comes a two-step process, and that's okay.
The section you read about if someone is really bad, that they can be brought, that it can be brought before council to decide if they are removed or not. Can you read that little segment again, what you had there?
"If a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee misses X number of meetings during the course of a calendar year, that member will be, or may be, recommended for removal from membership." Depending on which word you want to use. One puts the onus on us, one puts an onus on them to get to us to put the onus on us.
Yeah, the onus on us would be good. Is there a stopgap for someone who just is maybe out of control in meetings that the rest of the committee or commission might, might say, "Let's have this re-looked at at city council"?
Yeah, I think that the word "may" in there, the council, the committee gets to figure out if this person's had, you know, accidents, illnesses, and deaths in the family, takes it into consideration, and they don't worry about it. On the other hand, if the person just says, "Well, I'm not coming, I'm gonna be gone for six months, I'm not going to resign while I'm gone," you know, or whatever. Then it comes, they get recommended coming to us.
So, if there's someone who... So, I'm guessing more than attendance, I'm talking about if it is someone who agitates and makes things rough for others. Is there... Would we have something in there, in that section, for them determining if it should be brought before council for removal or not?
The only thing I put in here, it refers to officers. The members, the members shall develop internal rules enshrined in their bylaws to determine the methodology of removal of an officer
Oh, the officer.
From an internally elected position. But not in membership in the group. Now, if a member of the group becomes unruly, don't have anything directly in here about the members deciding to remove somebody, which would have to be brought to us, they'd have to have the cause, the way this second part is written. "Members shall develop internal rules enshrined in their bylaws to determine the methodology of recommended removal of a member from the committee of the city council."
Should that be added? Should we add something like that?
Yeah, the first sentence is about removal of an officer. And the last sentence is, "The members shall develop internal rules enshrined in their bylaws," which means they've all agreed to it, "to determine the methodology of recommending the removal of a member from the committee to the city council."
Okay.
So, that covers both the officers and the general populace and a methodology, but they have to develop a methodology for doing it in the bylaws. But we're directing them to do that, so we will do it.
Okay, I think I have to look at it, in the packet, we only changed minor things, the second reading. So, you know, I gotta really focus in on that when I see it in writing, but...
Yeah, I think the will does, it's a pressure release so they don't have to vote and make it, it can just be brought before without having to be made to it.
So, the will will be made.
And we can add it, but if, remember, if one of us disagrees, the way it's written, next time around, a second reading, we can make minor changes at that time. You can't make a wholesale change in ordinance at a second reading. But, you know, you can make minor changes.
Jim, can I read that back to me, so I can make sure that I'm correct?
Okay.
Okay, you're talking about the last?
Yes.
Okay. "If a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee misses," and we never did decide how many.
That's twenty, you said.
Let's keep it at three.
Three? I don't know, three, okay.
All right.
Misses three... Okay, "If a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee misses three meetings during the course of a calendar year, that member may be recommended for removal from membership. The members shall develop internal rules enshrined in their bylaws to determine the methodology of removal of an officer from an internally elected position. The members shall develop internal rules enshrined in their bylaws to determine the methodology of recommending the removal of a member from the committee to the city council."
Was that it?
That was it.
Anybody else want to make any suggested changes in the ordinance? Okay, so, we're gonna, I'll entertain a motion to approve the... Go ahead, Aaron.
One other thing I wanted to mention is it appears we've got the section numbers incorrectly numbered. It goes one, two, three, two, three, four.
Didn't see that.
Okay, thank you.
What is your problem?
They are.
So, we'll need a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading with the changes noted, so...
I motioned to approve the ordinance number 1,001, and ordinance of the city of Phoenix to establish Parks and Recreation Committee, chapter 2.13 of the municipal code. As it is revised.
Well...
Not as it is.
As it is revised.
As revised, okay. Do I have a second? Sorry. Okay. So, it's passing a motion with revisions noted. And any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Warhol? No. Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Vermin?
Yes.
Counselor Crawford?
Yes. Okay, we're down to city manager report.
And I've got a long one tonight, guys. I've got quite the update for you guys, it might take a while, something.
You've got twenty-one minutes.
Yes, no, I'm kidding. I just wanted to let you know that we are working on a volunteer policy. What's in your packet, still need some tweaks. Counselor or two and I talked, and there are a couple of things that we need to adjust or make some changes to. It's an administrative policy, it's not necessarily anything that you needed to vote on, but we wanted to show it to you. But again, there are a few little tweaks that need to be done. So, it's not ready for primetime. You have something I want...
There's a vast section in there related to employees.
Right.
Use of technology or the internet. Was that in there just to make potential volunteers aware of the system of our policy with employees? And if they happen to be involved in such, or should it just not be there?
No, where it references employees, that's incorrect.
Okay.
To volunteers. It, the sections about employees were supposed to be sections about volunteers. So, that is the majority of what needed to be changed.
Great, thank you.
Good catch. And if there are any other questions about the volunteer policy, you know, I can address them, but it's really more of an administrative policy. The other thing I wanted to advise the council is that we've got the acoustic panels up in the multipurpose rooms, and it's made a significant difference. If you aren't real familiar with the way it sounded before, it's dramatic in how different it is. And I wanted to thank Kimberlin, Bray Lynn, and our public works crew that installed those panels, they did an excellent job, and they did it quick. So, thank you, everybody. The other thing that I wanted to touch base on is J.C., our finance director. She's out of the office for a couple of weeks. But during that time, we were hoping that the council would have an opportunity to complete the manager evaluations. And if you want to return those to city hall, then when she gets back, she will do the tabulations for the policy. So, anyway, that's my update.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go around the horn, I guess. Because when we have council comments, you don't have to comment. But if you'd like to comment something, you're welcome to. Mr. Baker, Mr. D.C.?
All I would say is that, you know, finding out about all the people we lost from our utilities is that I would like to see us, you know, one of our study sessions, whatever we do, maybe we could find some ways to incentivize our employees with happiness, you know, give, you know, do something. We go through too many people, you know, and if we can only afford to pay them so much, then we can only afford to pay them so much. But there's other ways we can make their life better and make it, you know, more, help them find more content in that year. It bummed me out when I lost Ray. I mean, we're losing a couple of those guys, and, gosh, I mean, you know, the best jobs I've had in my life were less about the paycheck. You know, it was more about how I was treated, and I'm not saying everybody's being treated bad. I don't want to take that road. But there's gotta be things we can do for these people. You know, I've, you know, and I don't know, you know, every now and then just bonus them with something, maybe a dinner in town or something, you know, or, you know, there's things that we can do. And if we could brainstorm that sometime, I think it would be really good. I mean, and also, if we want to also, I'd be interested to see how much it costs us to hire an employee and to possibly take that number, consider raising the wage to that number. We're gonna spend it anyway, why don't we just keep the employee? Brainstorming, not all great ideas, but they don't all suck either.
Just reminding all the employee, you know, the bonuses, the pay, that's a city manager, writer type of things, we can, at the council, I guess, ask, you know, make some general suggestions, but...
Right, you know, I'm not saying, you know... The air's... I don't think that's the case.
Just in general.
I'm just saying that as a council, you know, if we could really show some support for our employees, it would go a long way because, you know, we all, we all work, or we're retired, but we've all been there, and appreciation's a powerful, powerful...
I don't want to say a tool, but it's necessary. Powerful vitam.
Vitam.
Thank you.
I had a great week. I was down in California in Anaheim. Ripping up with the seventy degrees, blue sky, went to Huntington Beach.
Rubbing it in.
It was nice, that's all I have for today, thank you.
Not fair.
Stinkering.
Well, sacred pools, there's nothing we did to their counsel.
I don't have anything other than still in Kimberlin's Survey Monkey that she has put out for, it's on City of Phoenix, Oregon, on Facebook, but it's a Survey Monkey for recreational programming. A quick little five-minute survey to see what we would like for adult activities in the civic center.
Counselor Wilson, please.
So, we had the RVMPO meeting last week on Tuesday. We discussed the idea between RDTD and the RVMPO regarding alternative measure seven funding. I did flag Phoenix, the concerns that you all raised, and brought up the specific language of the motion that you all talked about. You were specifically concerned that if... You were specifically concerned that if some funding came, like, reallocated under H B twenty seventeen, which was the transportation funding package, that then became available for expenditures as opposed to expansions. They wanted to make sure that that was included for a reason to bring up the I G A under review. And when I brought that up to the policy body, they said that's already in there. They under, this is what you felt for and will pass. And they all agreed unanimously that that, said that there should be, felt under the category of their section B, duration of agreement, where it says, should there be a significant change to the, or, should there, sorry, should there be a significant change to the R U T D's funding that constitutes a major increase or decrease in services, projects, or programs? And they said, they all agreed that in that instance, it falls under that category. So that means that the I G A would come up in the event that, sorry, it was redundant. Nothing needed to be changed. It's done. We didn't really discuss anything else. The R V M P O, we get some minor amendments to the regional transportation plan, which we do regularly, that are pretty administrative, so. And, oh, we talked a little bit about dues, our dues went up by two dollars. So there was that. I know it's a hardship, but I think we'll get through it. We'll make sure it's remunerated.
Half a coffee.
Thank you very much. You know, I went to the, or we called meeting, and Mike Cavalero earlier talked about the items that I was going to hit upon, but one other item that he didn't mention was the fact that they gave away an award to a group that does litter cleanup on the, on the Greenway. They mentioned the amount of tons of litter they've picked up. It's just absolutely huge. And the forty-five second warning, we, I guess as a city, we're gonna, on our computers, we're going to get warnings that say, hey, earthquake is coming. The next exercise is, hey, what do you do with that forty-five seconds? And it sounds, it doesn't sound like much, but it, it really is a good chunk of time where you can make certain moves. A guy from Public Works went around the building and turned off a valve that might break and cause huge problems. And, you know, the city can do certain things at, with that forty-five seconds or thirty seconds, whatever it is. I guess the next step of the process is what do you do with that thirty seconds or forty-five seconds? And how do you react? Also went to a Southern Oregon Climate Action Now meeting, and they talked about putting solar panels on people's homes or buildings and having like a cooperative, a solar panel group where you all fund solar panels, not be in your own home, it could be close to your own home, it could be in the city, could be the neighboring city, anyplace where Pacific Power is the utility that you can come up together as a cooperative and do solar panels and help lower your, your cost of electricity. It's sort of an interesting stage as far as an idea goes, but that was a pretty interesting meeting. And I think that's it for me. Anybody else have anything they want to say for the, go to the order? Okay, all right. Well, that's, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at eight forty-three. Thank you very much. Forty-eight, sorry.